7:02, so I'm going to call the Board of Selectmen's meeting to order. I do not have any announcements at this point, so I would like to move right into the first item on the agenda, which is appoint acting officials and possible votes. And they would be for the Emergency Management Director and the Civil Defense Director.
So, by way of introduction, Mr. Chairman, a couple of things. One is Chief Vincent is quarantined. He's unable to function day-to-day in the office, but he is fully aware of what's going on and is involved in Emergency Operations Center and other things. But it's, my personal recommendation is that you need to be fully operational as a staff person to fulfill these functions, because you may need to go somewhere, you may need to have a meeting in person that you can't necessarily get done on the phone or talk to somebody privately, et cetera, et cetera. So, in the meantime, while the chief is out, there's this second question, which is, his contract specifies that he's the Emergency Management Director. There is no general bylaw or job description that defines the responsibilities of that title. The Civil Defense Act of 1950 refers to a post known as the Civil Defense Director that has extensive statutory powers when a Board of Selectmen declares a local emergency and there's also a statewide emergency. So, my thought process is this, the Civil Defense Director position is not compatible with an appointed department head who might be a public safety chief and might be a strong chief by local option and is, because we all get along in this whole system that we've put in place as joint command, it's not an issue. But you have to think about, in the future, if the Civil Defense Director actually has more authority during an emergency than the town administrator does, but the person with that title answers to the town administrator, it's just weird. So I think what we need to do to rectify this is write job descriptions for the two roles that are pretty clear about the checks and balances. The Civil Defense Director responds directly to the Board of Selectmen, it is your oversight, and so, to me, that's your contractual relationship with the town administrator, who's your chief procurement officer by definition and everything else, should be the Civil Defense Director, period, regardless. An Emergency Management Director is all the other things, hazard mitigation planning, all hazards planning, and the implementation of, you know, significant joint command or incident command in a major situation where a town administrator is not qualified to do it. So let's say you have a tornado rip through and you have mass casualties and you also have traffic management, a whole bunch of things that go with it. The Emergency Management Director is in charge of that incident, on the scene, calling the shots, moving assets, making decisions with the support of an Emergency Operations Center. The recovery from that, debris removal, contracts for whatever specialty services, that's a Civil Defense Director may have to do those things and that would be normally kind of fall to a town administrator. So, in the chief's absence, I think, we do need someone to be the Emergency Management Director day-to-day until his return, and then the Civil Defense Director for now, I think you should appoint the town administrator. That would be me, it's not, this isn't a money thing. So, what is a Civil Defense Director? It's those powers outlined in the Civil Defense Act, which are to commandeer the assets and personnel of the town in response to an emergency with the oversight of the Board of Selectmen. And then I think the second piece of it would be continuing operations, so-called COOP Plan, making sure we have information technology and phones and radios that are redundant, resilient, so that we can manage the town no matter what happens, whether to this building or to anything else. That's a, again, that's a long-range, I don't know how many fire chiefs I've ever known that want to just jump up and do IT networking. That's not the thing that they train for, get excited about, but it's something that a town administrator should pay attention to. So those are my recommendations. One, under A, Emergency Management Director, I just think it kind of makes sense to keep things in public safety, so the police chief would step into that role for now, and then the Civil Defense Director would be the town administrator. And just so you know, and remind everyone, by contract, the police chief is the interim town administrator if I should be quarantined or be out. So that basically keeps your two public safety chiefs and your town administrator kind of in the loop all the time with these different roles, and hopefully, nothing happens to the three of us all at the same time. Your secondary backup there is you've got the deputy chief in the fire department, a lieutenant in the police department, and then you get into your captains and lieutenants in the fire department.
Makes sense.
Those are my recommendations, Mr. Chairman.
I think it makes perfect sense.
I don't see any issues. The only issue, you know, I don't think we can address it at this level, is if more people get quarantined, I just don't want the same people wearing too many hats, which just becomes too much work for one person, no matter how qualified and talented that person is.
Right.
So we want to try to spread the workload, but I think you've done that to the extent that we can at this point.
Yeah, I think primarily, I think the biggest burden that comes off is, I mean, the Emergency Management side of it is, there should be a chain of succession that goes there, and then kind of run down through ranks as they need be. But on the Civil Defense side, it does make sense to have, you know, to make the motion to put Matt as the Civil Defense Director.
Let me know when you're ready.
Tim, what do you think?
I think that's perfectly fine and good idea.
There you go, Tim, you're right there. We'll camera right on you.
It's perfectly fine and acceptable idea, I would support.
Mike, what are your thoughts?
It makes sense, me as well. I have no problems with me that's that way.
How about you, Hal?
I concur.
All right. So the motion would be to appoint you as the Civil Defense Director, and would it be to appoint the police chief as the interim Emergency Management Director?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded.
We need to do a roll call vote.
Yep, roll call vote.
Mike Hughes, aye.
Tim Bonin, aye.
Kevin Morris, aye.
Dave Cortez, aye.
Al David, aye.
Okay. So that would bring us to Emergency Operations Update and possible votes for the Emergency Food Plan and Financial Timeline, Town Meeting and Budget.
So, Mr. Chairman, the way the town has organized its response to the COVID pandemic is to operate its Emergency Operations Center. The town of Douglas adopted the National Incident Management System and Incident Command System some time ago, and we are implementing that doctrine, and we're using a format called Joint Command, because there are many facets to this. It's not a fire incident, it's not a police incident, it's a, everybody's got to be involved in it. And technically, Incident Command or Immediate Incident Response is the Board of Health, and their designated agent, in this case, the public health agent, is the town nurse, Agnieszka Potstawka, who's been very much involved in the day-to-day response of the town to the pandemic. Within the EOC, if you remember your training, there's a, you create basically a secondary government, if you will, to manage the different aspects of the emergency operation. Once you start to get big enough, and it's going to be a long-duration thing, you have to do paperwork, you have to manage your finances and your accounting, and you have to plan for those things that are coming that you can reasonably foresee, and you need to have a response for, you can't make it up as you go along. So, those are called sections. So really, we're looking at the operations section right now is Agnieszka, who's handling those day-to-day discussions with people. And then the, what we've done with planning is, we've had all eyes focused on this so-called surge or the peak that people are referring to, and the governor in the last couple of days has been very specific that that surge is anticipated from April 7th to April 17th at some point. That so-called surge is the maximum number of people we anticipate moving through the healthcare system who really need significant care. And the concern all along, the reason why society's responding the way it is, is because we simply don't have the surge capacity in our healthcare system to handle all those people. At the local level, we're not concerned necessarily with hospital management, or, it does become a problem for us if people can't get the care they need and they have to start staying home. We hope that doesn't happen at all. What we've put some thought into is the double whammy of the psychological impact that people will feel with the news that they get at night. It will be not a very pleasant time for us as a country as we go through this, and you only need to look at Italy and Spain and some of the other places where this has happened. It's not the normal course of business in the United States to turn on the TV and see sick people and governors and mayors saying they've been overwhelmed and all the rest of it. Psychologically, it's overwhelming, people can feel very isolated. We also have the economic impact of people having lost their jobs or been partially laid off because their business is nonessential, so there's no money coming in, so the business ownership has let people go, and will have a significant economic impact as well. Our thought, as an Emergency Operations Center and planning function, is that our neediest people in town, so those, especially those kids who may qualify for free and reduced lunch right now, our seniors who may be shut-ins or who live in isolation and who have underlying conditions, are very vulnerable to this virus, don't want to go out at some point, how are we going to help them get basics? You know, can we get some food to them? Can we help them arrange for, you know, wellness checks to make sure they're doing okay, are they getting the help that they need? That planning section was formed, and Patrice Russo, our Adult Social Center Director, was made the section chief, and we also assigned Bill Kundif to assist her as a town engineer. Some of his work has slowed down, but his background with procurement and just having a mind for numbers and being able to organize tasks, this is a good team to put in charge of this food effort. I know they're both online, I don't know if Bill can be heard yet, but, Patrice, I kind of want to give this over to you, can introduce people to what you've been working on.
Good evening, everybody. We tried to work on hand-calling all of our seniors and seeing who actually had any needs as far as food or not being at school because of their age or because of their fear of maybe not helping to tell them. We've done some prescription deliveries for people. We have a wonderful list of volunteers that's been building, a lot of the townspeople have come forward with that. And we are receiving a lot of phone calls at the center, and we're actively calling everybody back. So I would say that when Matt asked about the food plan, we wanted to make sure that no child goes hungry in town. I mean, there may be two and four-year-olds that aren't in the school system yet, that might need a meal if their parents are laid off, and, you know, don't currently have an income and they're waiting for some relief to come in from the government, and that some of the seniors maybe wouldn't be able to make their own food if they're used to having a home health aid that's no longer coming, or they aren't signed up on the Meals on Wheels campaign. We only have about maybe 14 or 15 people that receive Meals on Wheels out of the 1,985 seniors we have. So, I've been working very closely with Bill and with the school department and for all of you, to come up with something that would fit the needs of everybody in some kind of a way. Does that answer the questions currently?
It pretty much does.
Absolutely.
Yep. And so, one of the first steps that was taken is Chief Vincent issued a letter to all of our department heads, looking for an inventory of everything they have. So whether it's personal protective equipment, the famous PPE, the acronym that will, nobody will forget from this period in our history, as well as any food resources or transportation contracts or any other asset that could be useful for implementing this plan. So, there are still items to be worked out. I don't know, Bill, do you want to jump in at this point and say anything? Are you able to? I don't know that Bill's microphone is working, so I'll kind of, I'll outline it.
No, Bill's mic is still broken.
The, there's two things, right? There's, the school system is closed, so there are assets in place within the schools in terms of food that were, that was acquired to support the school lunch program, and then there's anything else we might buy as part of an emergency response above and beyond those assets. And then on the school side, again, there's a contractual relationship with the school bus company, and it's a small business, a family-owned business. Our thought in the EOC and the leadership in Joint Command was that we won't, we don't want those people to fail.
Right.
So if they can earn money under their contract, because we're not paying them right now, they're not transporting students, if they can earn money from the town and the budget line item has already been appropriated, why not engage them? They're not going to use the same equipment, but their drivers know the town, drivers know most of the kids by sight on their route, because they see them twice a day, every day, and leverage that as a source of relief, getting the food prepared at a central location to the people who are out in a semi-rural community like Douglas, where people can live pretty far away from each other and can't make it to the schools. And right now, we have social distancing in place through May 4th, so you can't get people together to feed them in a, the congregate setting, you can't do it. So that's, that's where we are. There are details to be worked out. So one of the ongoing discussion is about, you know, what is the most cost-effective way to buy foodstuffs? Is it through a bulk program where the meal has to be prepared and everything broken up and then packaged, or is it better to get prepackaged things that are single servings? That can be expensive at retail, but it might be more efficient in terms of just being able to bundle things up. It's probably going to be a combination of the two, and that is not decided yet. But what we're, our goal is this, that within the next week, we will at least pilot test this program. Now, I would ask people, just think about this in terms of emergency planning and emergency response, if we're worried about congregate living facilities with predominantly elders living there who may have health issues, I can think of two off the top of my head, that when you add up the apartment count, it's going to be over 100, it's probably 150 to 175 individuals. The program gets fairly substantial fairly quickly, and you need to have a plan in place, you can't just throw it together. And then, we all understand, in this modern age, we got people who have food allergies and nutritional needs and all the rest of it, and our hope is to work with qualified staff at the school department to organize that thought process so that we're providing people with things that are safe and nutritious for them. May not be the brand they want, may not be the exact thing they want, but if they're too afraid to go out, it'll be something to sustain them through a few weeks of difficulty. That's where we're at. What's the funding source? Again, not finalized yet, but there's a thought that, well, the school bus contract is pretty substantial, it's on the municipal side of the budget, it's important to remember, it may, all the regulations come from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, but the actual funding is, it's a town contract, it's on the town side. So it's not part of the local contribution to the schools, the freestanding relationship. If that's not being fully spent out, there's money that will sit in that account that won't be spent out this fiscal year that could be reprogrammed. How we go about reprogramming it and putting it into the Civil Defense Budget, which is probably where it will go, is a question for Gene and Courtney and everybody else to work out with DOR. Our purpose right now is to be very detail-oriented and transparent in the way we document what decisions are being made, what's being purchased, and how's it being allocated. We don't have a crystal ball to say how long this program would go on, but when we think about what's about to happen over the next few weeks, it's time to close ranks, and as a community, just stay, we're going to defend the fabric of the community, we're not going to let weak people suffer if we can help it. So it's not the ice cream truck, it's just basic support for people who need it the most. It'll still end up being a couple hundred people.
Okay.
On the financial timeline, I thought Gene would be joining us. Why don't I just take a quick run-up, because she was in her office?
Okay.
All right, she's not. Within the Emergency Operations Center, there's also a financial and administration section, and Gene has been appointed to lead that. What that is, is planning for this disruption. You'll have choices to make as a board when the Senate finalizes legislation and the governor signs it, I assume he will, changing the deadlines for all of these important meetings, town meeting, special town meeting if it's needed, and the finalization of a budget and what to do if we don't have a budget in place by June 30. There are any number of scenarios, they each have milestones that are kind of tied to, they're not kind of tied, they are tied to, decisions being made by the governor and others about when all of this is going to end. Couple of milestones that everybody needs to keep in mind is that, yes, the fiscal year ends June 30th. We're in social distancing through May 4th. It takes a certain number of weeks to finalize a budget, because this board has to review it, and FinCom has to review it, and we shouldn't just willy-nilly pass over all of our major institutional foundation blocks just because it's not convenient. We need to do all those things. Once you get into the end of June, the town closes its books, and the town accountant then becomes very busy with trailing invoices and resolving trailing invoices as quickly as possible, and then beginning the audit and working with the auditors to close our books up and prepare the town for its audit. So it's not entirely fair to the town accountant to rush to a town meeting on July 15th or August 1st, because she gets into that conundrum where she's going to be keeping the town moving with payroll and paying a warrant, closing books and preparing, you know, helping to prepare a budget and being a resource in the budget process. That's not a lot to ask of your finance director. So, to my mind, I know a lot of towns are trying to put this off to June because they're hopeful that they'll, will come out of the woods. My personal thought on it is, we probably won't get a budget done until the fall. We would have to follow legislative prescription for what to do. The bill's been changed, Mr. Vice Chairman, so the last time we had this conversation, you said one-twelfth of the budget.
Right.
So now the language says at least a one-twelfth of the budget, because there's a recognition that we might want to pay our pension contribution, and we'd overspend that first month because of cash flow, and that's kind of where we're at. I, I don't know that I need the guidance tonight. We'll need it very soon, though, probably within the next, you know, within two weeks or four weeks, because if we're going to prepare a month-to-month budget, that's, it's a bit of an undertaking, we would want to involve FinCom in that, we would probably have to involve the school committee on their concerns, because they have a whole bunch of problems here with, their revenue streams are kind of off-kilter. And that's the last piece of this, which town administrators were on a listserv this afternoon talking about, well, what happens if the state has a revenue shortfall? And their promises to us on our preliminary cherry sheets are not going to be kept.
Very likely.
So you can have a town meeting in June and light off the fireworks, and then, well, here comes July and August, and the revenue that you might have anticipated isn't going to be there, and you're going to redo the budget anyway. So that's where Gene is with, with all of this. Right now, I don't want to put words in her mouth, but I'll very generally say that her view is that fiscal '21 is not a bust. We have a lot of the information we need to do a budget for fiscal '21, it's already in place. We know what our assessment is for Norfolk and for BBT, we, we know what our assessment is for the pension, we have a renewal for the health plan and what our working rate for the next year will be. So with the exception of property and casualty insurance, which is always the issue, and we just estimate, we try to overestimate that so we don't get caught short, that's really all the data points are present. The issue will be whether or not the revenue materializes. Now, in reviewing the budget today, and the revenue budget, this fiscal '21 budget is not heavily reliant upon a projection of revenue from the state or from local receipts. Local receipts, because that was your policy that you established through your Strategic Budget Committee before I started here, you guys established how conservative you wanted to be. So when we look at new growth and local receipts, we're, we almost don't put any money into the revenue budget for that, because we don't want to count on it and then get caught short later, that, we don't want that to happen. The wild cards will be two, I think. One is how bad and how long is economic disruption, whether or not we can sustain the five-year budget plan and its year-over-year 2.5% levy increase that's factored into that. And secondly, cannabis. Some communities looked at their host community agreement payments as a source for funding capital or other one-time expenditures. The way we're dealing with it right now in Douglas is it's going to the general fund. So, we have every reason to believe that the retail establishments are open on the medical side, and the host community agreements tie not to plants in the grow, they tie to whether or not retail, the medical dispensary piece is open for a full year. So that's, that is still scheduled to happen, because the newspaper articles have been written, we have them from the Worcester Telegram, that those dispensaries are open. So that, as far as I'm concerned, the HCA is tolling, and we would expect a payment one year after that, that place opened up, which would be about this time next calendar year, which would be the middle of the next fiscal year. So I'm not, I'm reluctant to pull that out of there just yet. I will tell you, and I think I already disclosed this to you, that the way the budget process was going with all the conservative revenue estimates we had built into it, we still had budgeted a surplus, not a big one, and the thought was, well, either we're so far behind on resolving trees, can you imagine that, one point with, the biggest threat in town was trees falling in the roadway?
To get those to...
Or, or to supplement Chapter 90 activities, or to just hold and roll it over as free cash. That's off the table right now. I think that, that budget surplus is going to be your wiggle, and we'll end up coming into balance with no surplus at all, but a much more, you know, a conservative, sustainable budget. Are there any questions about that financial milestones and timeline? No? There was a question today, I thought it was a timely question from a constituent about waiving interest and penalties. Right now, the plan is to follow the legislation, the recommendation, is to follow the legislation and allow the treasurer, the finance director, to waive interest and penalties for a certain subset of payment due dates. Tax would still be due, but there'd be no penalty until we get out of the woods, we can figure out. We're also, under existing authority, the treasurer can withhold demands, and she was, she is, basically, her recommendation is, we won't send any demands until after society's out of the, out of the woods here, because we don't want to put people under that kind of pressure. And, you know, we typically send out demands so that we try to get all the cash in right in Jan, in June, at the end of fiscal year, and clean up the books and have a good collection rate and all the rest of it, but I think this year, that's going to, that'll be delayed as well. Now, water and sewer are not really your purview, the commissioners are elected, and they're going to have to make their decision about their policies, but we anticipate a lot of hardship, so we don't want to chase people. There is one thing, though. If you already incurred penalties for not paying your taxes on time up till February, there isn't really a good reason to give you a complete pass, and that, we'll kick that to you, that's a policy choice that I think you'll make, but I don't know about the wisdom of that, because you're, somebody's already in arrears, and maybe you, maybe you stop the clock... in arrears, and maybe you, maybe you stop the clock, but you can't stop it completely because everybody else had paid up to that point. That's an open question. That's just something, food for thought. There will be those people fit that description.
When do you need an answer on that?
There are some pieces of this that are in the same piece of legislation as your authorization to, to postpone town meeting. And we just do it all at once. Make it all a package. Just broach the issues tonight. Somebody might ask the question, what about cash flow? Does the town have sufficient cash flow if we don't have a budget? And, and we do. So certified free cash was one and a half million, and then there's the ongoing real estate collection.
Yeah.
That's all I had on that piece of it.
All right, so we don't really need to... What's that?
I think that was that.
So we don't need to take any action on that item right now? Okay. So we'll move on to the Family First Coronavirus Response Act enacted by the President and possible votes?
We will need a vote here, Mr. Chairman. So the feds passed this bill, and the President has signed it. And what it is, is it's a complicated piece of legislation with lots of pieces to it, but the piece that's important for us is two weeks of paid sick time over the top of anything that anybody already has. So if you have a COVID-related quarantine or a COVID-related course of treatment, you're entitled to this federal time of up to two weeks paid sick time. And there are some limits. There's a daily limit, I think it's $511. And interestingly enough, the legislation allows municipalities to opt out for first responders. And I certainly don't think you should do that.
I would question the thinking even behind that.
It's poor thinking because you, if you opt out, you're leaving that money on the table, and you won't get reimbursement on the backside.
From the employees probably most likely to be in need of it.
Right, so I don't know why the feds did that, but I'm asking you tonight to take an explicit vote not to opt out.
Working in the public's interest, too.
Exactly, exactly. I'm perfectly all right with voting not to opt out of the, of the act.
I definitely echo that.
And that's the vote that we're in need of this evening, Matt?
I'm asking you to do it so that we can memorialize that and assign that vote to the payments and score it to our emergency costs in the event that they might be reimbursed.
So are we adopting this whole act with that proviso, or just do we need to vote on the proviso?
I think to be really technically pure, you would only need to truly need to vote if you were going to opt out. I'm asking you to take a vote not to opt out so that...
Just on that issue, rather?
On that one issue.
Okay. I move that we not opt to exclude our first responder and healthcare providers from the expanded benefits.
Second.
I'll second that.
All right. Motion has been made and seconded. Can we do a roll call vote, please?
Mike Hughes, aye.
Bone and aye.
Kevin Morris, aye.
Dave Cortez, aye.
Al Davis, aye.
Excellent. Okay, so...
That wasn't easy one.
That was. I wish they were all that simple. Town clerks update on elections. I'm going to, we should pass over this, or do we have an update from Chris?
She asked me a couple days ago what I thought of, you know, the legislation did pass, has already been taken care of. So the general court has put out all the rules, and you may postpone the date of your election to a date certain or postpone it without establishing a date. So that's the selectmen's choice. If you don't make that choice, the Board of Registries can also make that choice. It's an option. When I was asked what I thought, I mean, I've, I've been around elections for a long time, so my only conversation I've had and concern that I have is that ballot qualification process should be completed so as to not create this weirdness where one party may or may not have caucused already, and then the general ballot access is closed, the time for submitting signatures is closed, and that, then somebody hasn't caucused yet. That creates a strange sort of dynamic in an election. Everybody, once you close everybody's nominations, you know what's going to be on the ballot, then the town clerk can print those ballots and not get caught behind on that activity. And it's also a free and fair election for the candidates because they know who's running and who's not running, and, you know, they have the opportunity to make their case accordingly. If you have no idea who, if that one party hasn't caucused yet, you have no idea who they're going to put up, if they're going to put anybody up, and maybe they're going to hold their cards and put somebody up at the last minute. I just, there's something un-American about that, so.
So does it make sense to hold off on deciding when we're going to have an election until both caucuses are closed?
It might be helpful if, yeah, I don't know, I don't actually know the status. I think my understanding is sketchy, but I think there's one party hasn't caucused yet. I think. I think the Republicans have caucused, the Democrats have not.
I believe you're correct, based on information I received today.
Yeah.
And the Democrats are caucusing Thursday.
Well, I, I don't want to say anything just based on an email I received. I'd rather, if we need concrete information, I'd rather follow that up. I'm happy to do that.
Yeah, if you could do that.
I will. I didn't have time to do it today, so.
All right, so we'll take the can down the road on that.
Rules being the rules, they had to be done by yesterday?
Well, I think the...
I'm not sure.
All right.
I'm not sure of the date either, but I think the governor's order would probably interfere with that.
Yeah, no, and I'm fine with that. I think everyone should follow the process, and we should know what those, or what the end game is, or where the, the contest will actually take place. But I wouldn't also, you know, given the technology capabilities, I wouldn't be delayed in moving the process forward either. I think time is of the essence.
There will be a lot of enhanced early voting and mail voting as part of this process this year. People, it might catch, probably will catch on. People will like it. It's because it's less troublesome.
Okay. So there's no action needed on that one, really, right now?
No, I, I think with the pending question about the caucus, I think you should just hold, keep your powder dry.
Okay.
I'll provide the chair with some information as soon as I get it.
Excellent. All right, so we need to approve the minutes from the previous meeting?
March 17.
March 17.
So moved.
Second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Mike Hughes, aye.
Bone and aye.
Kevin Morris, aye.
Dave Cortez, aye.
Al Davis, aye.
All right, minutes approved. So brings us to your report, Mr. Administrator.
We've covered a lot of what we've been up to. One last piece of this is the Emergency Operations Center. What are we doing in terms of communicating with the public? We put out a public notice a couple times a week. If we need to update it at any time, though, we update it sometimes the same day, sometimes within the same hour. And your primary distribution points are the cable television station, so the, the text is on the screen, the town's website, your homepage, the town website. And in terms of the social media presence, the Douglas Police Department, the Douglas Fire and Ambulance Department, and Douglas Emergency Management, all putting out those official statements from the Emergency Operations Center. We're not going to do a morbid drumbeat where we tell some, you know, every time there's a new case of COVID-19 in the town. That's just, that's very poor practice. It makes everybody down in the dumps because the number's going to go up. It's inevitable. And it doesn't serve a good public purpose. We'd rather put out helpful information, quick reminders to people about what the rules are, and when there's conversation around town about what's going on, we try to engage what's going on. So to be a little bit specific, the last public notice, we had six cases in town. I'll do it once a week, just so that people do have some grounding, because the town-by-town results are not being posted at any state resource right now. So you get a Worcester County count, but you don't get town. People will want to know that. That's fair. Yesterday, we were at six. We had sort of a straggler come in from the weekend, so we're up to seven as of this morning here in town confirmed cases. There's been one case and some testing that has gone on in our elder complex at Riddlebrook over on West Street. It causes a certain amount of public conversation. The management there has been very helpful and supportive of the effort to address the issue. And the town nurse and our town staff, so we have, we've been assigning people who are working in town hall day-to-day to make phone calls, wellness checks to lots of people, including people at Riddlebrook. So they've heard voices from people at town hall. Are you okay? What's going on? You all set? So there's that conversation with the public health official for the town that's ongoing. Management disinfected the building over the weekend, the same time we disinfected some of our buildings. And we have a volunteer effort going on, which we think is vital to this conversation, which was to get thermometers in the hands of people there if they wanted them. So they were asked if they needed it, to monitor their own condition and just report in. And secondly, to gather, for those people who have tested positive, gather their laundry in biohazard bags and wash it. So that people are not frequenting common spaces if they are positive, because there are just things you have to do, and washing your clothes is one of them. Stay in your apartment. We'll take care of it. The issue here is we want to be proactive as a town because, first of all, this is a local issue, and I don't know if anybody else is going to care. I mean, a place with 44 apartments is big for Douglas, Boston sneezes through 44 apartments. They don't even think about residents of that size. If government has failed anywhere, it has failed in these congregate settings with elders. There was a mess in Washington with a nursing home where COVID went wild. And then this morning, we have the absolute utter disgrace of the news that came out of Holyoke.
Yeah.
And almost equally bad news out of Revere, where people had a problem within their building, and they didn't take care of it in a responsible way. And unfortunately, elders with underlying medical conditions are especially vulnerable. When they get sick, they get very sick, and unfortunately, they pass away. And that's the case in Holyoke. We don't want that to happen, so we want people to be, we want to help people as much as we can without actually governing their lives. I mean, they still have to make choices as adults. But we're trying to take all the problems away. So that's what the food service is about, this laundry help is about. That's what that constant contact with people, with thermometers and health checks and reminders about social distancing. So we don't want that to repeat itself in Douglas. Lastly, I think I'll address, nobody's ever brought this up, but I just want to make sure everybody is on the same page. The Code Red messaging service that the town pays for is especially useful if we get notice of something that we have to get out to the public very quickly, and we have no other way to do it. So posting stuff on the website doesn't help you if you don't look at the website. So if something's going to happen an hour, if we're going to fly a plane overhead and spray for EEE, we've got to be able to tell people quickly, and that's what Code Red is for. Or if there's a huge wreck on, on Davis Street or Webster Street, and you're going to have to find your way around it, well, that just happened. So if we message that out on Code Red, then people have a basis for information. This is not that kind of emergency. This is drips and drabs and waiting for the bloody things incubation period and all the rest of it. And we may eventually, and may perhaps it's one way of publicizing the availability of the food service, we may put Code Red out. But to date, we haven't because the nature of the emergency hasn't dictated that we use that service. Are there any questions about that? Because I know sometimes people ask about why not, why is a Code Red being?
No question, but a comment, just, I think that's good. Using or overusing, pick the term, Code Red is going to add to the general atmosphere of fear that you mentioned before. It's going to crank people up that much higher. The press is doing a wonderful job of that all on their own. You can quote me. I think anything we can do to ratchet down everybody's stress level a little bit is good. And I think, you know, a Code Red call, especially if it were to impart information that's not immediately useful, is probably just going to crank up everybody's blood pressure without any real measurable results or anything we're looking to have happen. So I think it's a good idea.
I'll expand on that, too. Is overuse of an emergency broadcasting system like Code Red and things like that, people become desensitized to it.
Good point.
And just the sheer nature of how this is going to where it's a daily update or a weekly update, at some point in time, we may actually need an immediate response of the community, and they'll be like, oh, it's Code Red again. All right, I'll just ignore that. That's all. Anything, Tim?
No, I had thought of Code Red while this happened, but it makes perfect sense to kind of keep your powder dry there and use it for immediate needs.
Mike, Hal, you guys got anything on that?
No. I just concur. I understand that it makes sense.
So my last part of my report would be, with only seven cases, we still do have members of our fire department who don't live in Douglas, so they don't show up in our town statistics. We've, we've had the misfortune of being one of the towns, along with North Attleboro, where we've had a number of members test positive early on. And they're all coming to the end, some of them are coming to the end of their quarantine, a couple of people got sicker than others. And I think every single person who works in that, that station deserves a mention for standing up, and especially our call folks. Our goal has been to carefully manage the resource. So we don't want our key people getting sick. So the goal has been to run both ambulances, to run one as basic life support, BLS service, for those typical things. A kid fell off the stairs trying to ride their bike down the stairs. That, that's ever happened, right? And now there's a dislocated shoulder and some, some bruised feelings. And that's a BLS call, and we're not going to put everybody out for all those calls when there are these COVID calls coming in that require that extra level of effort sometimes, putting on the PPE, asking the screening questions. And you can be almost certain that when, as we go along here, some, somebody will say, well, that person's having an episode, they're coding, they're having a cardiac arrest. The person also is having that cardiac arrest because they're COVID positive. They're complications from the disease. So there's a lot of stress on those people. So we've had two ambulances running instead of just one. And if you've been monitoring this, the calls have been pretty frequent. So they've been really busy, and there's been some massive fires in the last two and a half, three weeks where we've been all out at the fire scene with the same people. We're returning, we, we think by the end of this week, we'll have a couple people back from their quarantine.
Good.
That will put us back into a full three-shift rotation on our full timers. We'll still have some people out, and, and leadership is out right now for the foreseeable future. I don't, I don't think leadership will be back right away. So Captain Ferno has stepped up. He is the commanding officer right now in the fire department and participating because he's done all the training in our day-to-day emergency operations. But I just wanted to clarify that for people. The town nurse is intimately involved in every single one of these conversations. So when we run any call where there's any thought that there could be an issue, we're not waiting for testing or anything else. We're notifying the town nurse, and the town nurse is applying CDC guidelines to that situation. So that aspect of it has been under control. I'd like to think in a very strange kind of way, this is almost a blessing. It's almost like get it out of the way as long as nobody gets too sick. And obviously, we're very concerned when people get sick. But part of the natural travel here is a certain number of people have But part of the natural travel here is a certain number of people have to get sick in order to build resistance to it and all the rest of it. Get it out of the way early while there's still hospital beds to land in if you get sick. And let's just hope that it doesn't materialize the way they say it's going to. Hope against all hope. That's all I had, Mr. Chairman, by way of my report. Are there any questions about our activities or...
Patrice, are you on the line? Still?
I am.
So there's 1985 seniors in town? Are we, are we reaching out to each and every one of them or just the ones that, that may visit the social center or that you may know of?
So we called all of our regular people that visit the center, the council programs, let them know that we are putting some of the exercise programs up on cable. So we did that first. We did have some Town Hall workers, the library is going to start making phone calls, Justin's workers over there, and my staff have been making non-stop phone calls just to kind of see what anybody might need moving forward by making 1985 calls and sort of passing.
Sure.
So we concentrated now on the 232 80-plus-year-old seniors. So we're going to start there and then work our way back down again. Just because the 80-year-old population seems to be a little bit more vulnerable.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, the 1985, there's probably a couple duplicates in there, right? So maybe it's not 1985 we need to call, but maybe a thousand or so.
Right. Right. I think there was 750 just between the age of 70 and 80.
And what do those calls entail, just checking in?
Yes, so we're calling in just to see how they're doing, just to see if they have any support services. Do they have any past medical history they would be worried about leaving their house? Would they need somebody if they didn't have a home health aide? Are they on a prescription medication that they don't get through the mail that they would need? You know, life-saving medications, a lot of things like that, letting people know about the food pantry, checking to see if they have meals on wheels. And if they don't, do they have a family member doing their shopping? If they're not able to do it themselves? Just a bunch of just general questions, checking on the wellbeing.
Good.
And kind of making a list from there so we would know who our most vulnerable people are.
I think that's great. I just commend Matt, you, and the rest of the, everyone in Town Hall and our public safety. I mean, you know, we knew we had a quality town here and I think we're really kind of showing that we do things and we do them well.
Oh, I mean, I, I have to say, to be part of it, you know, even work with the town engineer on a food program, you know what I mean? It's just kind of like being reassigned and Matt is putting all the resources, you know, resources together just to kind of make sure. I mean, even the town accountant's assistant has been calling seniors. So everybody really has to stand and it's a wonderful group of hard-working people and everybody is really working behind the scenes, so...
Yeah, I can mirror that point. Like, it's been impressive. I've been coming down to Town Hall just about every day to check in with Matt, make sure things are, are moving along pretty well. And I have to commend, like, our, our fire department has really just stepped up and been getting it done, each and every one of our medics and just kind of moving along and going call by call and making sure that they're staying safe. And I have to say, on the other side of it is on the, I've been getting a lot of reach out from residents asking how they can help. So I mean, it's, it's definitely something good to see with people trying to all come together as a community and help out wherever they can.
Oh, yes, we've been inundated with calls at the social center with people wondering how they can help, teachers, retired people, you know, that are still very trying and a lot of other volunteers within the community. Their kids are home, their high school kids, everybody wants to help out. So it really is a lovely community to be a part of. I really, you know, I mirror what you just said, Kevin. It's been exceptional.
I'm not surprised at the response, but I'm very pleased by it.
No, it doesn't, not much surprises me. And I know we still have a, we do have a CERT team here in town that's still looking to see where they can get engaged. I think they're sitting in a holding pattern depending on how things work out with the food program. I know that they're available to Patrice to make calls to seniors or to, you know, people that are ill that just require a check-in. So we have more than enough, you know, non-first responder-based resources that just seem to want to jump in and help wherever they can. I have to approve my disclosure for the video conferencing solution.
So I'll speak to it to avoid the awkwardness.
Thank you.
Whenever a public official has the appearance of conflict of interest, they need to disclose that to their appointing authority or to their fellow board members. And an appointing authority can sign off on somebody. So in the case of, there's a appearance of conflict at the Highway Department or the Fire Department or wherever, I can sign off on that. But you as a board, you're elected, so you're accountable to one another.
I actually have two disclosures.
Kevin has two disclosures to make to the rest of the board. One is that we are using Avaya, which is a telecommunications provider of some sophistication in the corporate world, for this conference meeting and for the conference backbone to support the Emergency Operations Center because we may need to do remote meetings. And that was generously provided by Avaya for no cost. But because Kevin is an employee of Avaya and has actually helped make this happen, it was appropriate for him to disclose that. Secondly, the volunteer stepping up and doing laundry is Kevin's wife. You can't just do this. You need to have OSHA training and you need to know what you're doing with handling this stuff. And it wasn't the kind of thing that we were going to put out the bid or that people were going to jump up and try to do. We had an immediate need at Riddlebrook and an immediate need at the fire department for contaminated stuff to go into the appropriate place to be taken care of and sanitized and returned. So Tina has stepped up to do that. Again, that's something that would have to be disclosed. Now, she's going to charge a per-pound cost.
Yep.
For the fire service.
Correct.
And it's a dollar fifty a pound. I don't think that, that rises to the level of anything that should be terribly concerning.
It was actually two dollars.
Two dollars a pound. So you priced yourself out. There was a bid, I guess. But I, still, I mean, just for...
Corner of the market.
The purposes, just for morale purposes, there's certainly merit to taking care of it and making sure it's all decontaminated. But for morale purposes, it's like, you're running ragged, now you want to change your uniform because you don't want to bring stuff home to your family, drop the uniform in a bag and somebody will take care of it for you. I don't, I think it's appropriate for the town to do. And Tina's done, really stepped up, so... But I would request that, because I'm involved in this, too, that you go ahead and sign off on this, that's okay. The Avaya thing, I mean, it's 90 days, right? And then...
It's 90 days. So if we need to extend past it, we can. Avaya's already graciously said that they would step in and extend our licensing. So I think that their long, won't pull punches. Their long-term goal would be to get somebody from the SLED team to come in and look at our infrastructure, which I do not support the SLED team, so...
I'm not opposed to the complication. We, so the phone line that we're using for the EOC, whether it's Avaya or their competition, the way it's done in terms of being a soft line and having other things, you know, feature-rich, which is much better than the rest of our phones in Town Hall, is appropriate for emergency operations because it allows us flexibility in, you know, communicating with others that we don't have from our existing phone system. But we'll cross that bridge when we get to it. We'll run, pardon me, we'll run an appropriate procurement at the, at the time.
So you need a support of the board to accept the disclosures as stated and...
The four of you have to deliberate if you want to, vote to basically say that, you know, you're comfortable with the situation.
Let's deliberate.
Any further discussion from the four remaining board members?
No.
Not permitted.
I would move that we would accept, well, actually, one, Tim.
Did you make me do this one?
I'm going to make you do it.
All right. Let's see how we do here. I'm going to make a motion that we accept with gratitude Kevin's disclosure regarding the Avaya video conference service and also his wife's service in taking care of the necessary laundry of our public safety professionals.
I would second that lengthy motion.
You guys can roll call vote it, I guess.
Roll call vote. Tim, bone and aye.
Dave Cortez, aye.
Mike Hughes, aye.
Al Davis, aye.
All right.
All right.
At that point, I'd look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote?
Mike Hughes, aye.
Bone and aye.
Kevin Morris, aye.
Dave Cortez, aye.
Al Davis, aye.
Excellent. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.
Thank you, gentlemen.
You're welcome, gentlemen.